All right, call to order.
There she is.
Light it. Hi, am I late?
No.
Oh, yeah, like everybody.
Are you staring at me?
Sorry. I have to work a little early, so I'm here. Excuse my appearance.
All right, roll call, Mayor Boren.
Here.
Mayor Protem Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Melton.
Here. I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the required for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any citizens communication?
No, sir.
All right, number five, public hearing. A public hearing considers proposed assessments to be levied against the assessed property within improvement area of Cornerstone Public Improvement District pursuant to provisions of chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code.
Do we have any money?
Speak on behalf of that.
Barbara, how long do we give them? Don't rush in or anything?
If no one's speaking, I would just close the public hearing.
Uh, it is 5:31. We will close that. Move along to six action items. A, consider taking necessary action appointing the tax increment reinvestment zone TERS Board.
At the last meeting, we had talked about having a membership and then in speaking with multiple of the attorneys, they said it's more normal to have the council function as that because it's dealing with taxpayer funds. And so our recommendation, at least for now, is to have the council appoint itself as the TERS Board. And later on, if you want to appoint another member, you can, but right now that you would serve in that capacity.
Because at the very beginning, I mean, if I remember when Jim put the table up there, it's going to take a while to really build any money up to have any big decisions, correct?
Yeah.
So probably at the very beginning, it's not a whole lot to be done.
Is this the same group that we had last week that we were contemplating the list of names?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But in order to get up, first off, you'd have to appoint them. They'd have to get up to speed and we needed to take action today. And so we're hoping that you will agree to be the TERS Board. And then if you want to reconsider in the future, like you have with the MDD Board, but right now professionally, it makes sense that the city council sit as that body.
Running along with our meetings that we already have scheduled?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was gonna ask. No, I definitely agree. And thank you for looking into that. I think it's definitely more prudent for us to do the, do this, especially since it's involving tax dollars. And if we could get the meetings on the same day as our regular meetings, that'd be fantastic. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we appoint the Rockdale City Council to serve as the tax increment reinvestment zone board.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Item number seven. Rockdale City Council now convened into executive session pursuant to section of the Texas Government Code 551.
No, sir. I apologize. This is to recess the city council to allow for the TERS Board special meeting. So.
Recess city council meeting to allow for the TERS Board special meeting.
And call to order.
Do we need a motion or anything on that? No?
Now, for the TERS Board, we'll do the call to order with the time and then another roll call for this. So if you wouldn't mind calling the time.
The time is a board meeting, I guess. Now is 5:34 PM.
All right, and our TERS Board, do you still say board member or, okay, I was just saying, Mayor Boren.
Here.
Board member Perry.
Here.
Board member Caffey.
Here.
Board member Walker.
Here.
Board member Oliveris. Here. Board member Starnes.
Here.
Board member Melton.
Here.
A call on this present.
Time now is 5:34 and we will reconvene into city council meeting.
We've got action items to take on the TERS Board. So the third agenda down, it'll have pink on it. So if you'll, let me just.
Now we're at this one. Okay, gotcha.
Push this down.
Oh, Wendy.
Yeah.
Just get back.
Oh, she's saying you can have that one. Yeah, I was like, I don't see a pink one. See one either.
I didn't have a copy of it. Okay, is there any citizens communication?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, item number three, action items. A, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a resolution to approve and doubt the bylaws for the TERS Board.
So, do we have it? You've got them right there, second page.
In your packet, if you've got a packet.
It's in there.
Yeah, that is a copy of your, of the bylaws that we are proposing. They're fairly standard bylaws.
So you could have this one.
That are for most TERS Boards, but they guide you in, you know, how long, you know, the different offices that you can, can appoint a vice chair and you will, will be asking you later on to actually appoint a vice chair as well as ask the city secretary if she will be the secretary for the board. It will talk, it talks in there about the aspects of what you're going to take up and consider, how you might modify the bylaws at some point if you needed to, the duration of the offices, kind of standard stuff that you would expect in any kind of a board's bylaws. So if you have questions, I'm happy to assist.
Well, y'all have already suggested some of the places and terms and all that stuff.
To an extent, yes, sir. Not, not trying to overstep bounds, just.
And in these bylaws, how often does it, how often does this board meet according to these bylaws?
As needed.
As needed.
You'd have at least one meeting a year.
And is it customary, it's customary to start like this? Is it customary? How long does it stay like this as the city council? Is, is your, also your TERS Board? Is it something that we should expect to do for two years and then start trying to fill it with other people? Or is it customary to stay?
It depends, Mayor Protem, on how desire is some of the people are in your community to participate, but it certainly, I would recommend that the council take for at least two years.
And I guess if it's always.
And there's other cities that literally that's who the board is, and they've had it that way for a while. You are dealing with the tax dollars and I do think that that is important and because you're elected, I think as, as the city council, as the representatives, I think that that lends some credence to that. But at the same time, when you're doing it as a TERS Board, you're not, you're not acting in a capacity of being an elected officer. And so it's, you know, you're, you're gonna get double roles. And so there makes some sense to get some other people involved in that once you've kind of get going. But you are dealing with a lot of financial matters, so I think that it just makes some sense, at least for the first couple of years, to have you all be in that seat.
Do these places and terms align with East and West Ward Council terms as well?
I tried to go off what was online as far as your terms, when they ended and started and.
Wherever my term is, it would make sense that that's my place.
Yes.
On the TERS Board. So when I leave, whoever takes this spot.
Yes, sir.
Automatically rolls. Okay.
There was an attempt at least to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Starnes, did you have a question?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
We're making action on this, correct? I'm making a motion that we accept the bylaws as presented.
I'll second that motion.
And actually, Mayor, on the TERS Board, you can vote.
All right. Three, B, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a resolution approving and ratifying the action of city council of the city of Rockdale designating a certain geographic area as a reinvestment zone number one for tax increment financing purposes pursuant to chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code establishing the boundaries thereof and other matters relating thereto.
So this one is, within the laws that create TERSs, it is asked that the TERS Board vote on and or ratify the area that was designated as the TERS, as the area for the TERS. And so this is basically, you're just ratifying and approving that area which you've already, as the council, designated as the TERS. So it.
It's the 166 acres that makes up Cornerstone.
Thank you.
Just out of, out of curiosity, that TERS won't change, that, that acreage or designation of land won't change ever, correct? You would create.
If there was a need to make another TERS, it would be TERS number two.
Two, correct. Okay. So this one is set in, in stone. We're literally just accepting what, the exact same thing that we accepted as the city council.
Yes, sir.
You did a good fine job on that last one.
Like, I'll move to approve line, line B as read for us to ratify the geographic area for the reinvestment zone as read. Is that appropriate?
Perfect.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Three C, consideration, discussion, and possible action of the election of vice chair to serve a one-year term.
Who wants to do it?
Look, you're grinning like you want it.
No, I'm just saying, who wants to do it? No, 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 no. I'm booked. I don't want to volunteer. Like, somebody wants to do it, right? Nobody wants to be voluntold to do this. You'll do it?
Sure, I was wanting that.
Merry Christmas!
Lynn Perry is vice chair.
I'll second that motion.
For a one-year term.
I think you'll do great at it, Lynn.
Sure. It's only one meeting a year, right? Surely I can make that.
I said at least.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Lynn.
Three D, consideration, discussion, and possible action of the appointment of the city secretary as the secretary of the TERS Board.
What says you?
I just found out about it today, but it's fine.
Is that a yes?
Yeah.
I'll make a mo- motion that we appoint the city secretary as the secretary of the TERS Board. I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Three E, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the resolution approving the final project and finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale, Texas.
Is there any
Changes.
financial stuff that we need to make decisions on at this point with?
Well, you'll approve the plan. Jim, is this the one that you did? So you've seen this before and it really just delineates those items that were allowed to be approved for the TERS. So it's something that you've seen before, but now this is just coming back to you for approval as the TERS Board.
Just out of curiosity, when you do TERS number two, if you do TERS number two, is it the same board?
No.
Not necessarily.
It could be a different board every time.
Be a different board. And I feel like somehow the cart has got in front of the horse on this one maybe. But on number two, would you have a TERS Board that's approving this stuff prior to the TERS actually being?
You would not have a TERS Board appointed before the TERS is actually created. You would still have to create the TERS and then you'd still be selecting a TERS Board.
Well, it's a little late for the input from the TERS Board, isn't it? Really? I mean, in, in reality?
Nope, this is the right time for him.
I guess this is when the TERS Board would say that they don't agree with this or not, make changes to it. If the TERS were, wasn't us.
Mayor Protem, the, well, the TERS itself, the creation of the TERS is a function of you, of you when you act as the city council. It is not the TERS Board that is, has the, they can, they can bless it and they are to be blessing it, but they are not the creationists of it. They can't be. You are the only ones as council members that can. So while it may seem a little backwards that you are still approving it, what you're approving is the, the project and finance plan for it. That was not part of what was the creation of it in the first place. It was part of the material that you were sent to understand why the need for the creation of it, but it wasn't the actual financing and funding plan for it.
I, I don't have any objection to any of it. It just seems a little back asswards.
Well, a lot of these things will seem a little backwards and a little redundant, I'll say, but we're, we're doing a belts and suspenders because there's a lot of things riding on this. So.
I'll do it. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution approving the final project and finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale.
I second. All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Three F, consider, creation, discussion, and possible action on the resolution approving the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale, Texas, reimbursement agreement.
You on this one?
No.
There's another form. I guess I'm, I'll make the motion to approve the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale for reimbursement agreement.
I'll second it.
All in favor? She's got it adjourned now? Yeah. The time now is 5:49 PM.
Yeah.
Still 5:49 PM. We're gonna reconvene in the city council meeting. Item number nine, resorting to the council. A, consider taking necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance of the assessment plan in accordance of the city of Rockdale, Texas, accepting improvement service and assessment plan in improvement area assessment role for the Cornerstone Public Improvement District, improvement area number one, making a finding of special benefits to properties in the district, levying special assessments for and portioning the cost of certain improvements to property in and for the Cornerstone Public Improvement District, fixing a charge and lien against all properties within the district and establishing a lien on such properties, providing for manner and method, collection of such assessments, and the payment of the assessments in accordance with chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended.
I was like, are you serious? Okay. I, I move that we approve line of nine A as read.
Second that motion?
All in favor of nine A? I have the consideration approval of an ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance and sale of the city of Rockdale, Texas, special assessment revenue bond series 2023, Cornerstone Public Improvement District, improvement area number one, approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a common purchase agreement, and offering member, I can't say that.
Memo.
Memo random, and continuing disclosure agreement, and landowner agreement, construction funding, and acquisition agreement, financing agreement, and other related agreements or documents in connection therewith, and take any necessary action on an ordinance approving the final project and finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale, Texas.
Anybody got anything?
No, sir.
Go ahead, Cough.
Make a motion that we approve nine B as read.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. See consideration and approval of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Rockdale, Texas, approving a tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale, final project and finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale, Texas.
I'll make a motion we prove it as read.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Item number 10, resolutions. A, consider taking any necessary action on the resolution approving the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, city of Rockdale, Texas, reimbursement agreement.
I just did this, but now we're doing it as a city council, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. I make a motion that we approve line item 10A as read.
Second that.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. And B, consider and take any necessary action on a resolution approving the TERS bylaws that have been approved by the TERS Board.
I make a motion that we approve the TERS bylaws that have been approved by the TERS Board.
Second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. Ten C, considering and take any necessary action on a resolution establishing an additional regular meeting for October 2023.
Yeah, what is that?
When?
Did I sneak one in on this, Barbara?
I'm like, when?
Immediately following this one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a need for, when you read, when we're reading certain documents, one of them has to be passed at a regular meeting. So we're having that following this.
Oh.
Just to throw, you know, some fun in for the last part of October.
You're Shannon and wake up.
No. We really don't have that, is that?
Okay. I, I move that we approve line item ten C as read.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Item number 11, executive session. The time now is 5:54. The Rockdale City Council will now convene into an executive session pursuant to section of the Texas Government Code 551.
Like a minute.
74 personnel, Texas Government Code, city council will need an executive session to discuss the minutes.
Is that what's for dinner?
All right.
Okay, the time now is 6:19 PM. The board will now reconvene into open session. Are there any motions?
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion that we appoint Herbie Vaughn as the city judge at will.
Second that motion?
All in favor? Motion carries one, two, three, four, four to two.
Four to.
All right. Let's see here.
Frank. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Frank.
Herbie, you're a sucker.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. The regular city council meeting is now adjourned. So the six o'clock meeting, we'll start with call to order.
All right. Roll call, Mayor Boren?
Here.
Mayor Protem Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Caffey?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Oliveras?
Here.
Councilmember Starnes?
Here.
Councilmember Milton?
Here.
Is there any citizens' comments or communication?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Number four, A. Consider and take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance of the City of Rockdale, Texas, accepting and approving the service and assessment plan and improvement area assessment role for the Cornerstone Public Improvement District Improvement Area number one, making a finding of special benefit to the properties in the district, levying special assessments for and portioning the cost of certain improvements to property in and for the Cornerstone Public Improvement District, fixing a charge and lien against all properties within the district and establishing a lien on such properties, providing for the manner and method of collection of such assessments and the payment of the assessments in accordance with the chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended.
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance four A as read so well.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. For B, consideration and approval of an ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Rockdale, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bond Series 2023, Cornerstone Public Improvement District Improvement Area number one, approving and authorizing an indenture of trust, a bond purchase agreement, and offering member random and a, sorry, a continuing disclosure agreement, a landowner agreement, and construction funding, and acquisition agreement, financing agreement, and other related agreements or documents in connection therewith, and take any necessary action on an ordinance approving the final project and finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, City of Rockdale, Texas.
I'll make a motion that we approve item B as read.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. See consideration approval of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Rockdale, Texas, approving a tax increment reinvestment zone number one, City of Rockdale, final project and finance plan for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, City of Rockdale, Texas.
Make a motion we accept item four C as read?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries six zero. D, consider and take any necessary action on any other ordinances, resolutions, or other documents related to and/or pertaining to the Cornerstone Public Improvement District Improvement Area number one, the TERS or items associated therewith.
I'll make a motion that we approve item four D as read.
Well...
Is this a catch-all?
It's a catch-all.
That's what it looked like.
It's a catch-all. And your team, for those that maybe don't know the, the rest of the people that have been working with us all, I was just, you know, discussing with them to make sure there wasn't something that we were aware of or had become aware of, especially with the AG's office. We're always a little concerned when these bonds are going out, that we need to make sure that we've got everything covered. You can go ahead and vote, just as a catch-all. But there's nothing that we are aware of, that we are presenting to you as needing to be voted on. But do any of you feel that there is a need to have a vote? All right. So...
You agree with that, Barbara?
Absolutely.
All right. So, I would just say, don't go ahead and vote. We were just using this in case something that we didn't think about had popped up and we needed to have it on there. So, I don't, we're, we're all good. This team is all good.
So, do we need to table it until further notice in case?
That would be great. How about that?
Oh, okay.
We could do that. And then, if you need to, you could do it again, if for some reason.
I make a motion that we table item four D until further recommendation from council?
All in favor? Motion carries six zero.
I'm sorry. Can we redo that? Brad wants to say that.
Item number five, meeting is adjourned.